We're in session and we have a couple interesting, you know, discussions today going to be going on. But first, an announcement, a reminder that tomorrow at the STUR office in Building 21 and 2408 Quarterhouse Drive, we're going to have a little continuation of our prior retreat. And hopefully, we can be doing this on a periodic basis, you know, just to close some of the loops that we've had in the previous meeting. And now, we have a very important presentation that we're going to have here that is going to affect the future of the city.
So Mayor-
And, you know, I welcome everybody and Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir. So in response to your previous statement, the staff is here to serve. And when the council wants to have meetings, we'll be here to provide you information as long as we know what the agenda is in advance. So we find ourselves at the end of the third quarter of fiscal year 19, our last meeting. That is the tickler for the city manager to present, as required, his proposed next fiscal year budget. And so today, I'm going to ask our Director of Management Services and Budget, David Bradley, to present our budget that we have been working on diligently since we issued targets to our departments in October. And so I hope you find no surprises in this. I've been very open, transparent, and communicative to you all about what the contents of this presentation should have. And you will find at your places copies of the executive summary, the operating budget, and the capital improvement. You'll also have some handouts that David will please include a conversation about what items you've provided to the council and to the viewing public that's present here today.
And if I, one quick announcement, Mr. Rouse is not with us today. He's not feeling well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, this is different because usually there's an unveiling of the budget and we're giving you information that you haven't heard yet. But as Mr. Hanson said, I think he's already told you what his rate increases are, fee increases, how we're addressing stormwater and some of those important projects. So what I'm hoping this presentation does is just bring all of that information together and also allow you to look forward to some of the operating budget discussions that we're going to have. So I wanted to start with what is your five priorities that you identified in the retreat? And to me, that is the headlines of this budget. You talked about stormwater flooding and sea level rise as number one. Public safety, transportation, education, grow the economy, and of course, investing in our employees. So I'm going to go through each one of these and at least give you a high-level summary to start with. Stormwater, we are increasing the six-year program by 41%. It's going to be 25 new projects added. And some of these projects are from subsets of bigger projects. We think that will give more transparency to what's going on. As the city manager has told you before, we're increasing the real estate tax 1.5 cent or proposing. We also are proposing redirecting 1 cent of real estate tax that was previously going for pay-as-you-go funding in the stormwater fund and bringing that back to the general fund. And I'm going to have some slides on this. But what that will do is fund 105 positions, move them from the stormwater fund to the general fund. And it's going to create capacity in the stormwater fund to address additional projects. We're also proposing adjusting the ERU rate, equivalent residential unit rate, by 3.5 cent. It's a daily rate over each of the next six years. Council's already approved 2.5 cent over the next four years. So it would be an additional 1 cent to what council's already approved for four years and then an additional two years of 3.5 cent. Another big priority for City Council is public safety. One of the things that the police chief presented in his budget hearing was civilianizing certain positions. And what that means is police officers might be public safety analysts, but they will now move those police officers to the street and we'll have civilians that will do that work. So instead of going through an academy and waiting for police officers to get on the street, this will put 12 officers on the street immediately. Burton Station Fire Station is not going to open in the next fiscal year. It will actually be early fall 2020. But we have to get the positions in place. So we have 15 firefighters that need to go through an academy training for paramedics. Commonwealth Attorney has the final phases of the body worn camera program. Police is already fully funded. And just to show City Council's commitment to public safety, it's been 137 positions added to public safety over the last five years. Transportation, if you look at the roadway CIP, there's $291 million over that period, six years. In the old days, we used to get urban construction funds. We don't get that anymore. We have to apply and our Public Works Department has done a great job going after funding. So we're going to try to leverage some state and federal funding. In the executive summary, on page 12, we have a list of 17 roadway projects that are either starting construction and will be over the next year. So you can see a lot of activity in roadways. And there's also a new bus route proposed from Town Center to Green Borough Mall. Education, the school board adopted their budget in early March. Proposed additional 79 positions, have funding for increased school safety. They have a $256 million program in their CIP over six years that funds Prince's, mostly funds Prince's End High School, replaced Winthergood Elementary, along with some others. They have increases in special education funding. And they did ask, subsequent to their budget adoption, to accelerate full-day kindergarten with a possibility of a .85 cent real estate tax increase. That is not included in the city manager's budget because it is not part of the budget they adopted. So they didn't amend their budget. They adopted their budget and that's a subsequent request for City Council. And the final priority is grow the economy. Got several things going on. Sports Center, I was just out there this past weekend. It's going vertical now. Dome Site, so those are two CIP projects. Those are both funded by the Tourism Investment Program, TIP Fund, as we call it, mainly tourism-related revenues that are there to pay for those resort area-type projects. Biomedical Park Development CIP project right up the road here on Princess Anne. Point One Data Center happening at Corporate Landing. Aquarium Parking Lease, so the parking across from the aquarium is actually owned by the state. And we will enter into a 50-year lease with them by paying them $5 million, $2.5 million over each of the next two years. Regional Broadband Initiative, this kind of relates to the Point One Data Center. This gives an opportunity for the Southampton Road Cities to have a broadband network that can be shared information, should help with economic development. And I think you were recently briefed on Opportunity Zones. There are eight in Virginia Beach. And this is part of the Federal Tax Act of 2017 that hopefully promote long-term investment. So investing in employees, there's a 3% merit proposed. The city manager's been very consistent on this from beginning of the process. The state budget includes 3% for school employees. And so we are matching that. And it will be done on the midpoint of the range. And what that means is anybody on the range, wherever you are, will get the same dollar amount. The dollar amounts on the midpoint of the range. So if you're at the beginning of the range, you get a higher proportion of pay increase. So maybe you might get 3.2%, whereas at the maximum, you might get 2.8%. We think that helps address horizontal compression. If you're at the end of the range, you'll get a 3% lump sum payment. And part-time employees get a 3% general increase as well. Budget also addresses vertical compression. Deputy City Manager Coover's been working on a committee that addresses this. And if you became, become a supervisor, over three years, they would be moved to the midpoint of the range. And we think that will help address vertical compression. Of course, vertical compression is when employees make more than the supervisor. You can see the school pay increase at 3% and how they do it. Health insurance, we are not asking employees to pay any additional health insurance in fiscal year 20. So they'll feel the full impact of the 3% pay increase. The employer portion will increase 3%. Changes in leave, so anybody that was hired before January 2014 got the standard sick leave and annual leave, 12 days of annual, 12 days of sick. Whereas a hybrid employee, someone hired after January 2014, gets paid time off. And we're recommending increases in the amount that they can get a year. And you can find that summary on page 18 of the executive summary. The other thing that we're doing is budgeting for attrition. So in fiscal year 19, when council adopted the budget, they eliminated the proposed increase for cigarette tax and the automobile license and also funded $3 million for vertical and horizontal compression. That was paid for by attrition funding, meaning that we always budget for full salaries. So we wouldn't be budgeting for full salaries. We take into account that there'd be vacancies. And we're going to continue that into fiscal year 20 at $5.1 million. So that's kind of a high-level summary of the headlines. So let's dig a little deeper and take a look. The budget is $2,766 million. That's a 3.6% increase. And I'm going to go into a little more detail. So if you look here, this pie chart is very similar to what we've seen in the past. Big three priorities, education's generally been 45% of the budget and that continues. Our infrastructure departments, planning, public utilities, public works is 14% and public safety is 12%. So once again, three of City Council's highest priorities. You'll see general debt service at 2.6%. There is other debt service in the budgets. You know, public utilities has debt, public works, schools. That's in their pie, their particular pie in this case. Another way to look at the budget is by category. So you can see here just showing the changes over time. Debt service, for example, is increasing. Stormwater had a bond sale this past year and we're proposing a bond sale in the fall of this upcoming year. Pay-as-you-go, that increase is mainly related to stormwater, the proposed CIP that we're putting together that I'll show shortly. And reserves at $33 million, looks like a big number. Roughly half of that is the money that's for the Sandbridge TIF that ends up being declared surplus, as well as money that's in the TIP Fund that we have identified as capacity that will follow the fund balance and will ultimately be used to fund projects. And the remaining reserves is mainly for the salary increases. So CIP, let's take a little more detail here. So if you look at this pie chart going forward, so if you see the blue, that is new facility. Green is the current rehab projects. When I got here 30 years ago, the blue was much bigger. We were catching up with the population growth of the 70s and 80s, building roadway, schools, libraries. But now, we have to replace it. And that's what that green represents there. So looking at CIP by category, if you see, we have 10 categories. And year one is what we actually appropriate. Years two through six are for planning purposes. And you can see here, and what I want to point out, if you look at the stormwater on that year six total, see the $395 million? It has now become the biggest proportion of the capital improvement program under this proposed CIP. And one way to look at it is what did the CIP look like in fiscal year 17? And you can see, this is the year that Hurricane Matthew hit. And you can see stormwater represented 9% of the six-year program. And over three years, and with the city manager's proposed budget, this is what stormwater looks like. So it has dramatically increased over that three-year period. You can also see economic and tourism increasing. Hopefully, that revenue will help pay for operating and maintenance costs going forward. So take a little dive into revenues. So here are, is your pie chart of major revenues, real estate tax. The largest local source we have at $605 million, 29%. We had five consecutive years of losses in assessments. Now, we're growing again, six consecutive rises in assessments. State is the second-largest pie. And you can see, $515 million. Kind of showed you how much is schools and how much is city. Schools is obviously gets a lot of money from the state and that's an important driver of their budget. You can see ours is a little smaller. But we do get, we get money for VDOT maintenance. We get money, what we call 599 money. We have our urban police department, so we get money for that. The law enforcement function in counties is done by sheriffs. So they get money from the compensation board. So this is a way to compensate for urban police department. Human Services gets a lot of state money, as do the constitutional officers. The third-biggest revenue source, personal property. I say this all the time, but most of that money's not going to come in until June 5th. So we're projecting in the next year, council's going to adopt the budget long before we even realize how much money we're going to have this year. So always kind of chasing that number. And you see, federal is the fourth-largest slice. So another way to look at this is just by category and the growth over time. You can see, real estate is growing 4.8%. The city real estate assessor was here, excuse me, and he, I think assessment's growing slightly above 3%. The 4.8% includes the real estate tax increase. Fund balance is growing. We use fund balance for one-time-only uses in the operating budget. So the aquarium, Marsh Pavilion, for example, is closing down. So for one year, we will replace that revenue with fund balance, kind of a one-time-only use. They also have not hired positions, you know, to try to mitigate that. Same thing with that lease that we're talking about for Pendleton. Even though it's two years, it's not an ongoing cost that we have to fund. About 2/3 of that use is from the schools. So want to talk about what the tax increases that are proposed are. I've already mentioned, real estate's going up 1.5 cent. Stormwater, 3.5 cent in each of the next six years is proposed. Waste management, $2 a month. And when council approved the extension of the water contract with Norfolk last fall, this is the rate increase to help cover that, 49 cent per 1,000 gallons. If you exclude these rate increases, because these are targeted for specific issues, the budget is growing 2.6%. So Mark talked, Mark Johnson, the Director of Public Works, talked about this last week. So I just want to kind of visually show you this. In fiscal year 19, this is what the stormwater fund looks like. There's 1 cent pay-as-you-go, going to fund capital projects. There was no increase in the ERU rate this year. Council did not approve that, but there was one in fiscal year 18. And it funded a $280 million six-year program. And you can see, all of these programs were funded in the stormwater fund. Going forward, this is what's being proposed. The 1.5 cent that we're suggesting the real estate tax be raised, plus redirecting the pay-go, will free up money in the general fund to take 105 positions and move them from the stormwater fund to the general fund. And with that, it frees up capacity to fund additional stormwater projects. So we're moving mosquito control, street sweeping, and those back to the general fund. Mark also showed you this last week, but I wanted to dive into it a little more detail. So this is what the program look like, looks like right now. It is a $280 million six-year CIP. Yeah, excuse me, it's that time of year when the allergies are hitting in. So $280 million six-year CIP. With the next budget, the one we're proposing, you'd get a $395 million six-year CIP, an increase of $115 million. So what the city manager has been suggesting to all of us as we meet, you cannot think about the budget anymore in six years. You know, this is a broader issue. We're looking at sea level rise and those issues going forward. So that's kind of what this next ring does, is kind of a 13-year plan. If we adjusted the ERU rate 3.5 cent through fiscal year 32 to get to 91 cent a day, had three additional 2-cent increases, we could fund $1.3 billion over 13 years. And then what Mark had suggested, there's an outer ring and I'm going to divide it. If those rate increases stayed in place, we could actually fund $2.2 million and start addressing sea level rise and those issues by 2040. And then this is his outer ring. And hopefully, with the money that we've put in place, we could leverage state and federal money to address sea level rise and some of these issues that our cities face. So want to talk about the budget too, efficiencies and so. So one way to look at the budget is constant dollars. If you look at the blue line, the budget has grown $316 million since the recession started. But if you adjust for inflation, the budget has not grown and it has not even reached the level it was pre-recession. But the city didn't stand still during that period. We've built the animal care center, human resource center, joint-use library, replaced two rec centers, added a new one, replaced fire stations, implemented the body worn camera program. So, you know, if you look at efficiency over time, I think we've done well. Another way to look is compare ourselves to other cities. A way, taking per capita expenditures compared to per capita income. We do well when we compare ourselves to other cities. But it is important for council and citizens to understand what we're asking in this budget. So when you take everything into account, it's not just the tax increases. Home values are changing. We're estimating that the typical citizen would pay $170 a year or just under $15 a month. So last, I kind of want to take you through your goals. Some of these are your priorities. So it'll be kind of duplicative of what you've already seen. So one of your goals is obviously grow the local economy. We've talked about a couple of these things, but you also have projects like the Lynn Haven Quarter improvements. Maintaining a financially stable city. Implementation of a new ERP. We're replacing a 20-year-old finance center. So this will be a great thing for people in budget and finance. It's our infrastructure that we need to move forward. Got a couple positions in finance to improve and ensure fiscal integrity. And we're replacing our real estate software. When 29% of your revenue comes from that source, we want to make sure we're doing that well. Proving transportation, another one of your priority areas. Mentioned some of these things already. But we got a separate project for traffic calming. Hopefully, give more emphasis to that. Neighborhoods, we have some initial study funding for Centerville Rec Center. We have a pilot project for Princess Anne Woods that I think you've already been briefed on. And I think the Director of Parks and Rec talked about some of the things that they're doing in parks, including, you know, having automated locks on restrooms and gates that can close the park at the end of the day. A competitive, sustainable destination for residents and tourists. Got a project that will modernize and add some restrooms to the oceanfront. Construction continues on the sports center. Two major phases of the aquarium. The care center is going to open in early 20, helps with the stranded animals. And then the Marsh Pavilion in 21, the veterinary clinic that you can watch a veterinarian work, jellyfish exhibits, there's some really neat things happening there. Be the safest city in the nation. We've already talked about that one, but this requires constant investment. And that's something that City Council has consistently done. An inclusive community. We have additional funding for the Housing Resource Center that recently opened. New positions in human services to provide case management for same-day access. And a new position in human resources to staff the inclusion and diversity council. World-class education system, 42 positions just for the existing implementation of all-day kindergarten. Funding for Princess Anne High School, Winthergood Elementary. And we have major renovations happening at our library. So if you've been there, some of them are closed and they're modernizing those facilities. Leverage in data, a new record system in human services. We got the take-home Wi-Fi hotspots that you can take from the libraries and get some internet access at home. VB Connect, so uses Amazon Alexa. You can ask what's the trash collection schedule and what job openings there are in the city. In modernizing city assets, I talked about the $2 fee for waste management. Well, part of that is to replace our vehicles in a timely manner. Man, those vehicles, you know, are on the road every week. And we're trying to get a timely replacement schedule. Because now, I think that right now, it's about a 13-year replacement cycle, which is a little too long. So we also have fire trucks that we have to replace. You'll see those in the CIP. We have additional positions for building maintenance. As I said, we're an agent city. We have to take care of those assets. And we got the replacement of the dredge replacement and birthing facility. So with that, finishing up, I just want to mention that we still have all the initiatives we've had in the past. We've got open budget. You can come into and look at any line item. You want to know how much office supplies are in the police department, you can do that. Open performance gives you community outcome measures, department performance measures. Balance and Act allows you to balance our budget. We submit that, I don't know if council remembers that, but we'll submit the results to you before you go to your final budget deliberations. We get a lot of usage out of that. Taxpayer receipt, if you enter certain information about your home value and all that, it'll tell you what you get for your city services. Open data, we have a bunch of sets out there. You can look at salaries, police calls for service, restaurant inspections. And we have the budget fact cards that we give to employees that are in front of you today. So just here's your schedule. Today, obviously, is the budget presentation. Five workshops scheduled for you through April 30. Reconciliation would be scheduled for May 7. Council would vote on May 14. Two public hearings, one April 24 at Old Donation at 6:30, which is a Wednesday, April 30 here in council chambers. So I want to finish up and mention what Dave said. So in front of you, you should have your set of budget documents. You should have the, a summary from the manager, which is a letter that's included in the executive summary, along with a one-page summary of just some key items, and you got your budget fact cards. And Mayor, if I may, just quickly, there's a lot of work that goes into this, obviously. And it impacts every department in the city. And I just want to thank them for all their effort. Each director, each constitutional officer, every council appointee has met with the city manager and the deputy city managers and gone through their budgets. I think you'd be very impressed to hear their presentations. Got to thank the city manager, the deputy city managers a lot. I feel guilty sometimes how much work they put into it. And finally, my staff, we got a wonderful staff in management services. For people that are more tenured, a lot of the ones that you would recognize, like Catherine and all of them, are retired. And we have newer staff. I think I figured out, I was really proud, I got to host a retiree with 42 years of experience in the fall, an analyst. And now, if you add up the cumulative experience of our analysts, it's 14 years. But what they lack in experience, they have just a great commitment to public service. They're fun, they're energetic, and they really care about what they're doing. And just quickly, I got four of them here, four of my staff. They're all upstairs listening. I wish I could introduce everyone. Jesse Stevenson's at the computer. He's actually the second-most tenure as an analyst. He's the one that put the presentation together. We try to do something a little different because we go to a lot of places with this. We don't want it just to be your typical PowerPoint. Jackie Conley's my executive assistant. And even though we're a small department, she's kind of the office manager too. We got payroll, we got all those other things to meet, so she keeps us on a straight line. She actually puts the executive summary together and the five-year forecast. Kevin Chatalier and Jonathan Hobbs are the two administrators in the department. And they manage the analysts and the data management team. So I just want to thank them and the staff upstairs. So that's what I have, Mayor.
Any questions?
Can we get the slide that we had at budget reconciliation? And I know we had it earlier, showing the different, maybe some of these booklets. But once again, showing where we are with debt as a percentage against the criteria. And based on this proposed budget, in what years, what's the capacity going to? So we can see what-
Mr. Moss, it's in the executive summary and it's also in the debt service section of the op- Yes, sir.
All right, I'm about halfway through.
We'll help you find, yep, yep. So-
And if you could, Ms. Hanson, if you could just share with me the slide that you put up at the end of the budget in May of 17, comparing the alternative budget of 17 and how we would, what we were borrowing for stormwater management. And I just want to compare that to what we're doing now because I'm sure the city isn't going to end. So I'd just like to see that.
Oh, please.
If someone here has a dollar value- If someone here has the dollar value of the actual 1% of the 3% that we're, obviously the normal split would be, what, 70/30, 80/20? Because I'm just wanting to make sure that we're also communicating to employees, that's a de facto raise because we're eating the whole cost, because usually that means our percentage of the total's going up, correct?
I'm sorry on this.
On health insurance.
Okay.
Our percentage of the total is going up.
Yes.
Because I think that's important for people to know, because that's a form of compensation.
It's roughly, it's something like 82% employer, 18% employee, something, but we can get you the exact.
What's important, a lot of private sector employers pay none of family, zero. And we're doing that. So that's just another indication of how the people in the private sector value the work of our public servants because they're paying for a benefit they themselves don't get. So I think it's important to communicate those things when people sometimes think that, hey, how come my health insurance is going up? Well, relative to people in the private sector, it's modest at best. You know, at worst, it's modest. And I just think people need to, because I know we talked before about total compensation. And that's a factor of total compensation is employee health costs. So I think we got to capture that, at least let people know. I don't know if we give people end of year, any kind of the end of year statement like we give in the government, saying, hey, you know, here's your stuff.
You also get it on your paycheck each period that kind of shows.
Yeah, but it doesn't come across the same, because people don't think of that as an indirect pay raise, but it is. And that's all I'm thinking. It's just, we're doing a lot, and I just, I think people appreciate it, but I just think we also, the council ought to get the credit for what we're doing it, because that is not the norm today across the industry to absorb those costs. I just want to make sure we get credit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else with a question?
I don't remember seeing a copy of the school board budget. Have we received one of those?
We gave you the copy of their letter when it was proposed, but I'll see if I can get us the adopted documents and get it in your boxes.
I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Forty-two positions for the kindergarten, how many schools does that include?
Jesse, do you know, because he actually, we can get that for you, Mrs. Wilson. But it's the third, it's the third-year phase in of five without the acceleration of it, but we'll get the exact number.
And Ms. Wilson wasn't here initially for your explanation of what happened with the kindergarten request. Can you?
Yeah, yes, sir. So when school board adopted their budget in early March, it did not include kindergarten in the numbers. It was not part of their adopted budget. The next week, they had a resolution, a subsequent resolution to ask city council for the funding, suggested a .85 cent increase in the real estate tax rate. It's not included in the city manager's budget in these numbers you're looking at because they didn't adopt it as part of their budget. It was a subsequent request.
John.
This is just an observation, because you showed the slide where the city's budget really hadn't gone up with considering inflation. Well, on page 35, the average weekly wage in Virginia Beach has grown less than inflation, not by much, but by $10. And my only point is that the city and the residents have a lot in common. And the city increases have exceeded private sector pay raises, if you track that. So I'm just, just points out once again that when you look at some of the statistics of people who are paying more than 30% in rent or more than 30% in housing, it does represent the national average that 70% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck, and they're under tremendous financial stress. And I think we can't ignore what those numbers translate to the same comparison as the ones you showed on your slide.
Okay. Is there anybody else? You know, I think we got some important decisions, you know, coming forward. And I'm hoping that at each workshop, that we could actually turn that into a mini reconciliation and have robust, you know, communication among ourselves, because I think it would help, you know, demonstrate to the public that, you know, we're engaged in talking about it. The other thing I would like to do is, you know, I intend to have town hall meetings in every district. I made, you know, this commitment. And I would certainly invite every council person, you know, to come out. And, you know, from now until the time of the budget reconciliation workshop, I would like to touch base with each of the communities in the city, you know, that, you know, just as a listening tour, but also, you know, we have some challenges ahead of, you know, Hurricane Matthew, you know, changed the course and direction on this in many, many ways in terms of priorities. And I think, you know, we have to deal with this in a very aggressive way. But, you know, communicating with the public, educating the public, and listening to the public, I think is going to be of paramount importance going forward. John.
The only question I have about the workshops, the ninth is the day we're going through all of the app, that's also, I guess that's a workshop day, but that's also the day that we're going through all the applications that have come in. Obviously, we don't know the quantity yet, but if the quantity is large, I don't know that a budget workshop and that event will go well together on a time basis if we're getting other kind of briefings as we often do on that day. I'm just throwing that out as a, think about that. Once we know the number, we won't know that till the eighth.
Right.
But that may not work well with the workload of looking through the applications if we're going to make the shortlist that night, which I think was our intent, correct?
Right. But I think that, you know, depending on the volume, we can make adjustments.
I'm just pointing that out.
Good point. Very good point. Sir.
So as you schedule town halls, I know Ms. Wooton has one this Thursday. Mr. Bradley has a road show. He brings this, he creates this PowerPoint, not much Jesse does, to make it entertaining, to make it visually pleasing. And as you schedule those meetings and invite the mayor to attend those districts, please invite your budget director to come out and lay that out there and bring his team and answer questions. Also, you'll find a one-hit sheet of pretty cool little graphs right here that'll be of assistance to use so that you can see the history. It's got all aspects with regards to our tax increases, our fee increases, and the division of the CIP, the comparables, as well as our increases in salaries and manpower to public safety and the like. So I hope you find the card. If you are able to digest that and you can take these, you'll get your arms around what the budget really has. We're going to engage in the operational budget sequence. That's what follows next. You're going to get a chance to hear from all your directors. They've got a tight script, but they are going to have ample time to answer your questions during their time with you at the podium. I appreciate the opportunity to present the budget, and I stand ready to meet with you individually as well as attend your town halls.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, what do we have next, Mr. Manager?
Well, it's kind of a lead-in. No meeting can happen, it seems like, without us having additional flood control and stormwater briefs. And so we're required by your direction to have a quarterly update. And we generally plan each last Tuesday of each of the quarters for Tony to come in. And as you know, she's our administrator for, she's our stormwater engineer. That's kind of how I think of her. And she's in charge of all that 15-year program that you saw presented last week with your Director of Public Works. She is the one that is orchestrating all the, all the design, the modeling in our Stormwater Center of Excellence, our design with our engineers. And she'll be overseeing all the contracts that will go out for the largest infrastructure program ever envisioned in the city of Virginia Beach. So let's see you live up to that one, Tony.
Me nervous.
Yes.
Wait for the mayor?
Go ahead.
Mayor, may we proceed? Oh, go right ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. As Dave said, I'm Tony Alger, the Stormwater Engineering Center Administrator. Today, I'm giving you the quarterly stormwater update from December of last year to the present. I do want to point out that this is the flood control projects in the FY19 approved CIP. It does not include any projects that were in the proposed CIP. Also, the funding tables that I'm showing on all of the project slides are the FY19 So these are the 11 flood control projects, as you've become familiar with them. There are two in yellow this time. They have delays since December, and I will go over those in a couple of minutes. These are the projects as they're located by district. If you count the dots on the map, you'll notice there's one missing. That's the Stormwater Master Plan Planning Project. That project is actually covered in all of the districts since it is modeling all of the watersheds in the city. So let's jump right into it. The first project, Aragona Drainage Improvements. As you know, this project is to make storm drain improvements to address roadway flooding. The neighborhood is old and was developed in the 50s, so the stormwater management system is undersized. Back in December, we revised the scope of the project after we received some stormwater modeling results that indicated that we needed to make improvements to the outfall of the system, which is called Betty's Bottom. So those, that revised scope of work and the revised project limits are shown here. With that revised design, the project did go up by $640,000. I am showing a balance to complete here. I did program that in the upcoming CIP. So on January 24, we held a citizens' information meeting for this project to update the public on the new design. In February, with the redesign, we did need to acquire, or we do need to require some stormwater, a permanent drainage easement and some temporary construction easements. So in February, we received authorization from council to acquire property easements. That also is the reason for the delay on the project. We are now going to be advertising in July. We expect to have all of the acquisition complete in June. And in March, we did receive our environmental permit. Asheville Park Drainage Improvements Phase One. This project is being done in conjunction with a cost participation agreement with the developer. The Phase One improvements include additional stormwater ponds, expanding an existing pond, new channels connecting the ponds to get the stormwater to move from the west side of Asheville Park to the east side to the outfalls. We're going to regrade and stabilize some of the existing ditches. That's the historic Um Ditch, as well as a farm ditch on the west side of Princess Anne Road. A new stormwater pump station and ditch and culvert improvements at the intersection of New Bridge Road and Sandbridge Road. So the activities in the first quarter include, the developer made their second semittal to the Development Services Center for their Asheville Park Drainage Improvements Phase One. We've been working very closely with their designer on this project. February 8, 100% plans were received on the permanent pump station, the Sandbridge-New Bridge intersection improvements, and we received the final plans for the Flanagan's Lane-Sandbridge Road Outfall Ditch. Now, we have created these three, we've separated these three projects into individual plan sets, so we can bid them separately for, to improve the schedule on these projects. February 12, we met with the owner of the Princess Anne Farm Ditch, that's Mr. Robert White. He is willing to dedicate temporary construction easements for us to go in and stabilize the ditch on the west side of Princess Anne Road. And on February 13, the developer made their third semittal to DSC for the Grandview Village Continuing on, on March 1, we submitted for the, our application for the environmental permit for the Sandbridge Road-New Bridge Road Intersection Project and the pump station project. We did receive comments back from the agencies on the Sandbridge Road-New Bridge Road Project. We addressed those comments, and we've resubmitted that application on March 20. On March 14, we attended the Asheville Park Civic League meeting where we gave them an update on the project. And on March 19, we met with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. This is our fifth meeting with them, so we've been coordinating with them regularly. We discussed the 100% plans on all of the projects and provided them copies of all the So the Lake 14 weir, as you know, is under construction. It's approximately 90% complete. It is expected to be complete by the end of April. I do understand that there's been some questions and concerns regarding the function of the weir, and we would be happy to attend Ms. Henley's forum on Thursday night to give a presentation, to answer any questions that your constituents may have regarding this project. Central Resort District.
Oh, excuse me, Barbara.
Yep.
You did mention, and I'm glad to do, and I really appreciate you all coming out to explain this, because, you know, now that this is built, and it's pretty impressive, you know, a lot of questions about what it's supposed to accomplish and how it's going to operate and so forth, and a lot of concern about the impact to the east of this, is what a lot of the concern is and so forth. But also, when all of this was designed, real quickly, after Matthew, you know, when we came up with the two phases and everything, I guess it was all predicated on, and now that Village D is gone, and Village E, we haven't really addressed, is there any expectation to revisit that original plan to see if all of it's needed? And, you know, in looking at, you know, initial, new data that we have from the Dewberry Report since then and so forth, because there's just a lot of concern about off-site impacts from all of this that's occurred, you know? And of course, the pumping with the pump station. And, you know, if this weir is going to prevent tide water from coming up, then that means everything that's in the lakes would be either stormwater or groundwater. And if they're going to be doubled in size, do we really need this new pump station and so forth? So these are some of the questions. There's a lot of questions about this project. So, you know, just to kind of let you all know that it's just, and the unfortunate thing is that this project is sort of monopolizing the whole district, and it's taking all of the district's money. And, you know, that's kind of a rub to folks in other places. So if we could, you know, this project has really caused a lot of angst.
Okay. And like I said, we'll be happy to be there Thursday night. We're going to have a few people.
Of course, my forum is going to be 40 people. We've got several thousand people out there who also need to have this information. So however we can.
Okay, we could set up a separate meeting if you'd like to address any additional questions.
What you got to do is get on all these Nextdoor and all of these social media sites and try to correct everything that's out there, because there is so much out there.
Yeah.
Facebook.
Ask a question about this project, or?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Well, you want me to, go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, no, I'll wait.
Any more questions on the Asheville?
A lot of questions, but I want to take everybody's time.
Okay. Central Resort District Drainage Improvements. This is a large, multi-phase project to address roadway flooding in this area. The ultimate improvements include an ocean outfall, a large pump station, additional storm drainage, tide gate at Laskin Road. And because of the size of this project, we did pull out two interim projects so that we could begin working on this area. And the first one, last year, received $500,000 in the CIP where we could get started on the design of the first project, which is replacing the existing 54-inch pipe that's located on 24th Street. Let me go to the next slide. So I'm going to give you an update on where we are with that interim project. In February, the stormwater model was updated, and the survey and geotechnical testing has been completed. In April, we're expecting the Design Alternatives Memo, which is giving us some alternatives to choose whether it's going to be a box culvert or a bridge replacement here. In June, we are expecting the 30% design plans on that selected alternative from April.
My question is twofold. One gets back to discussion that we didn't repeat today, but how we're going to go back and be looking at how we assess the ERU fee. But I've heard that, and hopefully the public remembers that conversation of last week. But it gets me to, when we take a piece of city land that was forested, because now we know how much forest absorbs water, both from the land and from the trees, and we take that out, which we did for the sports center, we turn it into a BMP, but we have a negative net loss from the property. In that case, just... In that case, just for food for thought, Mr. City Manager, that EU fee loss should be a charge to someone because we lost the capacity, which we now know we can model because the science is there, and that's a net loss to make someone else get drainage, but we lost something that we public had before. Someone should pay for that. That's just an observation. But going back to, when we look at these pipes, as the pipes fill up, because you can see there's a steady state, but as the pipe gets to full, the flow capacity of the pipe reduces.
Correct.
So what I'm asking is, we're doing our modeling, and we're also compensating for what we think the forecast of the life of the project, the rainfall and other weather plan. Are we, what's the degradation in the performance of the pipe over time? Are we oversizing it so that we're getting the same performance over time? So someone 20 years from now won't say, "How come they only made that pipe 48 inches? They should have made it 60." I'm just trying to, that's the kind of things that happen because of those issues. I'm just trying to make sure that that, the science of modeling, that people, and if we're taking that risk that you consciously tell us we're doing it, then I think then we know, an informed decision, we just didn't, out of ignorance, accept the bad, a plan that wasn't the best, but it's a cost trade-off. I would just like to understand, when these are priced out, how, what is that? Because I think I've mentioned before, it's what is the performance we plan to gain, you know, against our model? And I still think that's something that we need to understand when we're, before we vote on these projects, is I'm not just buying that, I'm buying some outcome. And it's unclear on these pages you go through, what is the outcome we're getting in terms of reduced rainfall risk? Because I know this is not sea level rise, so I appreciate this is, against this project, what is the performance we're buying? And I think that's, I think that talk to the public, it isn't just piping, it isn't just money. What does it mean in terms of the reduced risk to my property or my home? We've got to be able to tell them that.
So just to add a little bit of insight to what we were just talking about. So currently, we are working on revising our standards. And in our design standards, we are going to request that the developers, development community, the engineers, design for higher rainfall intensity. So our standards will be allowing for greater rainfall events.
I agree, but in these retrofit areas where we're bearing this as a public expense, you know, that same standard should be applying.
Yes.
And we should phase that, and that's, and this is, most part, not developers paying.
Yes.
I would like to see the Sports Center and the Music Hall and all these other people paying their share of this new standard. I don't think that's happening. But nonetheless, because then we would be tapping more revenue sources, so we ought to be maybe thinking about that. But nonetheless, I just want to make sure that a lot of places we're retrofitting, there isn't going to be a lot of developer participation. And we understand that. I'm not upset about that, it's just how it is. But I just want to make sure we can communicate to the public against this, what does that standard mean to them for what they're experiencing down there now when the water comes up and it's in their building or floods their parking lot? When this is done, for these circumstances, I mentioned before about visualizing how it's going to be better, I think people don't, can't tie the money being spent to the risk being avoided just by reading words. That's all I'm saying. We've got to figure out some way to communicate that.
Rosemary, okay.
Let me, may I respond?
Well, let me, before you respond.
Okay.
I'm going to sort of add on to what John is saying. And maybe if we could do something where they, sort of the before and the after of what we were getting before and make it measurable of what we get with the new, you know, with the new design and what it's going to be, so that they can see what was before with the new design after we spent the $26 million and what we're going to get now, so that they can see the before and the after.
So absolutely, yes, and yes, and yes. And these folks that are in our Stormwater Center of Excellence, they're modeling, they're modeling cubic feet, they're doing acre feet of precipitation. They are knowledgeable of the volumes of water that are laying itself on our city streets from precipitation. They are calculating what high tide and the nor'easter backing up at the Lynnhaven Inlet, not letting the water out, what that impact is. The residents know far too often what those calculations are based on their rain gauge in their backyard, the sheet runoff that's coming off I-264 into the intersection of 21st Street and Baltic, at the Yellow House, Kip's House, we all know it very well. And they will provide you, they will start to give you. Now, whether or not we grasp what hundreds of cubic feet and per second and all the data that they are, they'll provide you all that engineering analysis that goes into rightsizing pipes, et cetera, in response to what we're doing at the Sports Center. We've constructed, contractors dug a completely new BMP for containment to, and has calculated that, the outfalls, the intakes. We are now modeling what 17th Street has been doing and finding the size of those pipes and rightsizing that, so developers have an opportunity to calculate their stormwater according to the new standards that we're putting into place that Dewberry is projected to you, that Ms. Henley wants to have those standards brought forward, and we're working on those to bring those forward. That'll bring a whole bunch of developer builders out to have a conversation with the council about what that cost is to them to provide redevelopment as well as new development in our city. There's a lot of puts and takes in this conversation that I am extremely confident that our staff's able to do that. And we're also going to have to justify why we're not putting a $148 million project on the table. Let's attack it from a immediate 21st Street. We know what that problem is coming off the interstate. Bow that up to Phase Two, which is a simple $15 million project. May sound expensive, but it's pretty simple because it's taken the main channel, the Moka Ditch, we call it, and taken it to a collection lake that will have a pump, and that pump will put it into an outfall system that casts it into receiving body of water, and then that'll give us time to design the bigger phases. If you really take the time to look at the 15-year strategy, and we can break that down, we can give you a more in-depth, because you gave them kind of the big version, and each one of those has got a whole bunch of subsequent projects inside there. I think Ms. Henley hits on a good point when she was talking about Asheville. Since we're not going to build five villages, do we really have to put the pump station? Well, I'll tell you, yes, you got to put the first pump station because we already have calculated that, but you might be on a point. And we pushed out Phase Two way downrange on that flow of money so that we can actually calculate what the, because you may be doing something downrange in the southern watershed that's going to pull money, waters further from Asheville through the ditch system to another area, another complete drainage area, and you're going to collect it there and you're going to pump it into a third drainage area downrange, and that's how you cascade, you cast water in a falling environment, so that maybe you don't have to build in the inner circle to the extent it is. So all this conversation is about the sophistication, the level of knowledge that you as the decision-makers here in the city are now becoming aware of, and we'll provide you that information. But I want to reassure you that the modeling, the level of fidelity that these professional engineers and the professional engineer companies that we are, we are working with to design this, they are putting their best foot forward with all that science to bear.
Just pick up, I've actually sat down, as the people know, Tom Leahy knows, actually have sat down in the room and walked through the model and the parameter values, and there is a visualization tool in it. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to do that, but I think that's what we're talking about, because it shows how you change it, and it shows the water levels and how it changes. All the, you know, I love data, everybody knows that, but the average people, you know, this is visual learners. You can see TV, it's the traffic. You can see the tornado, they show the vortex. We need to be able to export the visualization that's in the tool and share that with the general public. And that is doable, and that's what I think's the heart of what Rosemary's talking about, is that.
Before and after, and in education, everything has to be measurable.
Here's what, this is what Asheville Park looked like during Matthew. Now, when you take that and you now change the parameter values and the flow rate, and it takes that water and says, this is what it will look like with these things in place. And that blue color gets out of your yard and out of your house and out of your garage and off the streets. I think that will be very, very useful.
Just know, Matthew was like a thousand-year storm, and we're not designing it a thousand.
I understand, but you got the idea.
I'm just, you know, check fire here on making sure we, but yes, sir, we have a visual tool, and we are developing that, and we are investing to the next level that the model's going to be able to show that, and we put some money into that, right?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on. Chubb Lake, Bradford Lake. As you know, this is a compilation of projects to address flooding in three areas. Church Point, Hollis Road, and the Chubb Lake-Lake Bradford area. The improvements include additional storm drains, additional culverts, including major box culverts under North Hampton Boulevard, Shore Drive, and Pleasure House Road, tide-controlled devices, additional stormwater management ponds, and channel and ditch clearing. So we continue coordinating with the Navy to open the Weir Gate at Nider Boulevard when major rain events are forecasted. Thankfully, we haven't had any of those recently. Public Works received the storm drain survey information from JB Little Creek on February 4th. This information is going to help us finalize our model for that, for drainage basin number one, which will be used to help us finish the preliminary engineering report for this project. Design is underway for the early implementation projects, and that's the dredging projects and the Pleasure House Lake outfall improvement projects. Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Phase One, another multi-phase project. Phase One includes Sections One and Two, and then they're shown on this map. The improvements for this phase include stormwater collection systems, tide gates, and pump stations. So the first quarter activities include, the Cape Henry Canal Improvement Project is the first phase of this project. We already constructed the Three Sluice Gates back in 2017. The next project is the Cape Henry Canal Box Culvert. It's a six-by-four box culvert that is going to be constructed between Ebtide and West Great Neck Road. It also includes drainage improvements on Starfish Road, Red Tide Road, and Ebtide Road. These improvements on the side streets include additional inlets and larger stormwater pipes. This is another one of the projects that was shown yellow on the dashboard. We've been delayed due to utility coordination with Dominion and Verizon. We have met with them continuously over the last three months. We are now scheduled to advertise for construction in late April. And on January 24th, we met with the Citrus Restaurant folks to discuss the impacts to the Cape Henry Trail during construction. Continuing on, I just mentioned the coordination with the franchise utilities. We also met with the businesses that are adjacent to the Cape Henry Trail between West Great Neck Road and North Great Neck Road to discuss the Cape Henry Trail detour. And we continue to coordinate with the Shore Drive Phase Three roadway project to work out any, all the issues that we had with the original plan set, and those are, those...
Got a question from Mr. Ward?
Yes.
So, go back one slide.
Mm-hmm.
So the Citrus piece, I guess, is where the blue rectangle?
Yes.
To the far right. So are you impacting their parking?
No, no, not at all. The Cape Henry Trail runs adjacent to them, so...
People park on that, too.
They park on the trail?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're going to be closing the trail at that location, because we're actually, the box culvert is going to be constructed in that area. So we met with them and showed them our...
There's like a Dominion Power?
Yes.
Little section back there behind it as well?
Exactly.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I know that on busy mornings, there's vehicles parked on the trail and on the Dominion piece and around the back and everything like that, so, okay.
You probably won't hear anything about that.
May hear something about that, okay.
Sherwood Lakes Drainage Improvements. This project is currently under construction. As you know, it's going to include a new pump station and a connection pipe between the two lakes. We continue to monitor the levels in the lakes and pump down in advance of any forecasted rainfall event. The Interconnect Pipe Project, we gave notice to proceed back in November, and that is expected to be complete in July. The North Sherwood Lake Permanent Pump Station Project, we gave notice to proceed in January, and that is expected to be complete in September. We did have a citizens information meeting on January 16th to go over the project with the public.
Just a comment on Sherwood Lakes, of course, the other big one that flooded in Matthew was Sherwood Lakes, and I think the very first estimate, rough estimate, was it was going to be a $20 million fix, but it was very good to be able to figure out it could be done with $3 million. And the fact that they're already under construction to just equalize those lakes and occasionally have to pump if it's overflowing, and that was a very good citizens information meeting. I think the neighborhood was very much on board, and it's good that this is going to be completed this year. So this is one of those good news things.
Good.
I know, but you'll be glad to get this one off of the list.
Move on to the next one.
Just an attaboy. Every time we can do...
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Moving on to another project in the Princess Anne District, Southern Canal Lead Ditch and Culvert Improvements Project. This project is for the design and construction of drainage improvements to canals, lead ditches, culverts, and roadways located in the southern watershed. The program currently receives 1.39 million per year, with 990,000 coming from the Agricultural Reserve Program. We currently have four active projects in this program, and they are shown here in yellow on this map, and I'll go into more detail on those. So the first project is what we refer to as Site Five, and it's located between Dolly, on Dolly Road, sorry, between Pleasant Ridge Road and Beggar's Bridge Creek Culvert. You can see the location in yellow. With this project, we're going to clean the Beggar's Bridge Creek Culvert at Dolly Road. We're going to excavate and regrade the roadside ditches leading north towards Pleasant Ridge Road. And in addition, we're going to clear Beggar's Bridge Creek and the farm ditches on the east and west side of Dolly Road, and we've just expanded the scope to include these areas, and they're also shown in yellow. Now, the notice to proceed for the ditch work along Dolly was given on March 6th, and the environmental permits for the rest of the work is expected in July.
Now, this is, the permits are going to be expected in July, but when is the rest of the work going to get done? I know at that public meeting, some of it wasn't to be done for another two or three years, and these are just little ditch cleaning and little culverts.
And hopefully with the upcoming CIP adding additional funding in that, we'll be able to advance those projects to construction, yes. The next project, Site Six, is located along Pleasant Ridge Road west of Dolly Road. We're going to reshape and regrade the roadside ditches on both sides of the road and replace the double 18-inch culverts that run under Pleasant Ridge Road with triple 18-inch culverts. The environmental permits are expected in April, and we hope to begin the ditch work in May, and the design for the culverts is underway and is currently at 30%. Site Number Seven is located at the intersection of Pleasant Ridge Road and Charity Neck Road. We're going to replace the two culverts under Pleasant Ridge Road with larger culverts. We're going to regrade the roadway pavement, reshape and regrade the ditches, and relocate the above-ground utilities. The design for this project is currently also at 30%. And the last active project is Site Number Nine, which is located on Gumbridge Road between Charity Farm Court and Gumbridge Court. So in order to help alleviate the roadway flooding right now, we're going to start by cleaning the existing culvert under Gumbridge Road and regrade the ditches, and we hope to start that work in October of this year. Then we're going to actually design new culverts under Gumbridge Road, and we're going to widen the ditches, and then we're going to overlay the pavement to add thickness and relocate the above-ground utilities. The design for this work is at 30%.
As we do all these new ditches and grading or whatever, are we establishing, based on what we understand, the topography and erosion rates? Are we establishing, whether than just standards, if you have all this computer GIS stuff, there's no need just to have average things? Are we going to go to condition-based maintenance standards such that we know that this is a place that because of what, maybe the farm, the erosion sedimentation is higher, and therefore this is on a cleaning rate of every five years or seven years? Are we... Are we evaluating as part of the assessment what we think the periodicity of maintenance needs to be on these ditches, so we're doing it incrementally as we were doing them versus citywide, and then we're entering that into our GIS database and evolve into a condition-based maintenance system, and then know we're funding it so we don't get the backlog that we now have? Are we doing that?
The answer's yes, and I don't know if you want to give them any details on that, but the, that, it is going, once it's been improved, it goes into the GIS system and in the system where it goes down the list as far as when it's due for its next cleaning.
But each one will be conditioned to the topography where it exists and the flow rates of water, so it's not a uniform standard, but it's specific to the site?
Yes. Unfortunately, it's really flat in this area, so there's not much flow rate. It, it...
When you get really heavy rains and there's lots of dirt, the water flow itself creates, despite being flat, creates its own current movement?
Yep.
And causes erosion, and you're going to get a higher sedimentation rate? I mean, I do understand this.
Yes.
And I'm just asking, as we move forward, and as we're doing these projects incrementally, it's more cost-effective to have condition-based maintenance and capture that, because rather than having a uniform, I'm going to do every ditch every 12 years. In some areas, you might only have to do it every 20 years, but some ways, you've got to do it every three. And I'm just saying, as we build these places new and doing the engineering work, that is the time to capture the characteristics and put it in the database. That's all I'm suggesting.
Yes.
That is our approach, and that is our goal.
All right, thank you.
And we're using GIS and the real information, which is the data behind it, to really start to track all these bits of infrastructure.
Super, thank you very much.
Oh, Shannon?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Go back one, one slide, please. Explain to me, what, when you say overlay pavement to add thickness, what do you mean? What's that doing?
So we can, we can actually overlay the pavement to give it a little bit of height to get it so that the roadway doesn't experience flooding in, say, a 10-year storm. There's a maximum amount that we can do that before we need to actually tear out the road and rebuild it from the base course up.
It's amazing how much, just another inch, has an impact.
Absolutely.
I know when, a couple of years ago, when you all did the Charity Neck, Moody Creek Road Culvert, and just raised that slightly, it made a lot of difference in the flooding of that intersection over the last couple of years. So just a small amount.
Yes.
So it was really a big difference.
Thanks.
Okay. Whoops, so in, in summary, on December 21st, we received the environmental permits for the roadside ditch work for Site Five. I already mentioned that notice to proceed for the ditch work was given March 6th. We held the citizens' information meeting on March 7th. Environmental permits are in process for Sites Six, Seven, and Nine, and the design is at 30% for Sites Six, Seven, and Nine. Stormwater Master Planning, Analysis, and Modeling. This is the project that's updating our city's stormwater master plans that were prepared in the late 1980s. There's five main watersheds in the city, and they contain 31 drainage basins. The colored areas show the areas that were modeled using the software called PC Swim, and the gray areas, which consists of a good portion of the southern watershed, are being modeled using a software called Mike. And this software allows for us to add wind effects to the water bodies so that they can be accounted for in the designs. So this, this is the schedule for the stormwater models. It is the same one we presented back in December. So at the end of the year, Drainage Basins One and Thirty-One in Little Creek, Drainage Basin Twenty-Nine in the Atlantic, and Drainage Basins Eleven, Sixteen, and Twenty-Three through Twenty-Eight were completed at the end of last year. And thanks to emails we received and our email account for stormpicks@vbgov.com, we are in the process of performing validation surveys for these watersheds. I do have, yeah, there it is, right there. Please send flooding pictures to stormpicks@vbgov.com. Every time I get a chance to speak to the public, I want to point that out because they really help. So for the Elizabeth River Watershed, Drainage Basin Two was also completed at the end of the year. However, we have not received any flooding pictures for Drainage Basin Two. That basin includes area, the Burton Station area and the Virginia Wesleyan College area. It also includes Lake Edward area.
Tony, can you explain to the camera what they got to put on their pictures, like the date and the location, so you can...
So the pictures need to show something that can be surveyed, for example, a mailbox. We could, we could, if you send us a picture of a mailbox, it needs to be time stamped because we actually run the model with a simulated storm to make sure that the storm, the results in the model actually match the level the water got on that mailbox. So a mailbox is an example. If you have a porch stoop, the water got up to the bottom of your porch, anything like that, anything that can be surveyed in the field.
Ms. Henley?
If I can make another comment, I just don't have a thing in the world to do with these CIP projects.
Yes.
But I know it's confusion in the public. Another very important part of the total budget, of course, is the water quality part. And these are the quantity kinds of things.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's the whole water quality kind of piece. And I'm real looking forward to the Green Ribbon Committee meeting on Thursday, when Melanie Coffey's going to come talk about all the water quality projects that are underway. But just how many TMDL mandates are we operating with now? Do we have any, well, just let me know at some point.
We can get you that number, but quite a few.
Quite a few, and particularly when we're dealing with all these little creeks down county, and they've got the TMDL things in addition to whatever we're trying to do with the quantity.
Yes.
Kind of makes a bit of an issue there, so we don't lose sight of the fact that you all are dealing with quality as well as quantity.
And we work together on all of our projects.
I was just wondering how many of those that you've got there have a TMDL with it? I know West Neck Creek does, and...
Melanie will be back.
And it's...
Yeah, I'll look at that. I'll know off the...
Yeah, Jess?
As far as the ones that are waiting validation location, do, do we need more photos for all of those and including Elizabeth River Seventeen and Twenty-Two?
Okay.
Or just two only?
So I was just getting ready to finish that, so for, that's okay. Drainage Basin Two is, is one that we need additional validation photos for. The rest of them, so the rest of the drainage basins in Elizabeth River, which are Seventeen through Twenty-Two, we're still modeling that, so those are not waiting validation locations. And then in the Southern Rivers Drainage Basins Thirteen through Fifteen will also be done by August. They're not waiting for validation photos. So the only ones that we don't have the photos for is Drainage Basin Two. Yes. Okay, moving on to the big three, Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes. We are still currently showing these projects combined. They were combined for the preliminary engineering analysis. That analysis is complete. We now know what the needed improvements are, or they have been identified. They include tide gates, pump stations, additional storage, and increased capacity in the stormwater conveyance. Now, in the upcoming CIP, we are splitting these projects back out, so in my next briefing, I will brief them separately. This is the preliminary concept plan. I have shown this to you before. As I just mentioned, we will, the engineering analysis identified that we need tide gates, so we need three, and they are located on the map. The first one is at the top of the slide, which is at Thalia Creek. The next one is at the North London Bridge Creek, which is on the top right side of the slide, and the South London Bridge Creek. We also need two large pump stations. The first one is at the top of the slide, which we're referring to as Windsor Woods Pump Station, and also at North London Bridge Creek. In addition, we need storage capacity in Princess Anne Plaza and the Lakes. We are looking at converting Bow Creek Golf Course and a portion of North Plaza Park into stormwater retention. Parks and Rec and Public Works are working together and have developed a concept for the conversion of the golf course into stormwater retention ponds. It's going to include trails, greenways, and open space. And finally, over 55,000 feet of storm drain improvements are needed in all three of these neighborhoods. Now, I did want to point out that we are continuing to review the engineer analysis, perform value engineering on it to see if there are ways that we can reduce the total project costs for these projects.
I have a question on this project, since I know this is one we have the data to model. So based on our model results, and I realize you're not going to get any firm commitment until it's done, from the, whoever the people in the future might be, FEMA or someone else who's determining the flood rating of these areas, but are we able to, at least maybe from a parametric point of view, give an idea of when all this was done, what our estimate is, if we believe where this would, would this now all be considered just normal risk flooding? I'm just trying to get a feel for, the reason why I mention this, and I talked before, and I know Louis talked before about, hey, some of these things, you know, we're dragging them out too long. And I just was talking to Louis earlier today, you know, the federal 10-year treasury notes down to 2.4414%, likely to go to 2.3% just because of negative interest rates. You go out another five years, and someone who thinks you're going to have 2.4% money, you're crazy, because it's just not going to happen because of other deficit issues. This is a really a bubble of time to borrow money. And so we might want to be rethinking our strategy. I'm not saying that we do, but I think if we don't at least make a conscious choice of assessing market timing and time to borrow cheaply, we could be making a mistake. I just throw that out there as a thought. You've probably been thinking about yourself, but we need to have that discussion as part of our workshops, I do believe.
Yes, sir, we're on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so...
Can I back up one?
Yes, sir.
Let me just, let me tell you something that's involved. This is canal number two. This is a static project that the federal government has. We've notified the Corps of Engineers that their management of canal number two in a static format no longer is applicable to the city of Virginia Beach. This, this is a conduit for a reverse flow from the Lynn Haven and High Tide by which a federal project is now allowing waters to flow into our city and to create a risk to our community. And so we had a very frank conversation with the federal government that they need to relook their static stormwater projects, and they need to begin to look at, how do you actively control a federal control, flood control structure such that the incoming tides that are now affecting us in a reverse flow now can be actively controlled by the federal government, the investment that they're going to make? And, and that's just based on rethinking the whole process by which stormwater is now becoming a conduit. And of course, the southern watershed is, opens that door, clean them ditches, and then the wind blows for five days, it comes ripping up those clean ditches and backs up into the farmers' fields when, in fact, we had different obstructions. Now we have to go and put those tide gates down in the southern watershed to block that southern flow so that it doesn't take those conveyance systems, those ditches and those canals, and reverse it on us and then threaten us back into the... And this is what's happening in the center part of our city in the same fashion that you're, you're suffering down in the southern watershed. I believe that is a key ingredient to what we are... But what you're seeing here is, you're seeing a fight internal to the local jurisdiction and their city, when in fact, up here is the, is the head, or correction, the tailwaters of all this water that's moving here and moving here. And the reality is, we're going to have to ask the feds to step in on this project and help us out and cut that thing off. So these are the, these are the huge discussions that take place in the second, second set of conversations with our federal and state partners that have, you know, they have some culpability in this conversation. It's not going to get any easier going forward. So the question is, what's the probability of them stepping in and do it? Well, you know, they just got tagged for $31 billion worth of long-term, long-term wall construction, the Corps of Engineers' entire work plan. When our federal government wakes up and realizes public enemy number one to the United States is sea level rise to their coastal economy, and you can only imagine what the coastal economy is of the United States with all major cities, we'll, we'll see whether or not they can muster forces enough to do the same thing you're doing as a government down here on the ground.
Well, you probably saw in the paper, because I'm not saying something, it's not a matter of public record, the damage to North Carolina and in Florida to DOD was $9 billion.
Barbara?
Well, this three-by-three-by-three plan, that impacts the Corps' ability to participate with funding or just a permit approval, or where does all that come in?
Three-by-three-by-three is the federal bureaucratic way of creating a study to validate and approve of. And as we know, you can have, you have to have that study to get to an authorization, and once you have an authorization, that's nice to have, but it doesn't move one cubic yard of dirt, then you have to have an appropriation. And in the Corps, they add a whole nother thing. They appropriate it to the Corps, and then they put it in a work plan, and they, not unlike I've, I do, I have here as a city manager, you have this many requirements in the city, you give me this much resourcing, and you tell me, have a nice day, Dave, figure it out. That's why I got DCMs and directors to help me out. Federal government has this many requirements, and they appropriate this much, they hand it to their agencies, be it Department of Defense or Homeland Security or Corps of Engineers, and they say, figure it out. So slim to none right now, because it really hasn't garnered the emergency level of fervor that we have here in the city of Virginia Beach. But they will all wake up and realize that they got to get with the program.
So we're just checking the box?
We're... Get first in line.
We're, we're coming at you. We're coming at you with your own local resourcing strategy, the set of projects and the financing to attack this. Eventually, they will wake up. Eventually, your nexus to the Department of Defense will have an impact in their decision-making. Eventually, the economy of the Commonwealth of Virginia will realize that what the, what the Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads area, because all our sister cities have the same flooding issues, and they're going to have to deal with them in the same magnitude that we are. Eventually, everybody's going to wake up and realize public enemy number one's already inside your backyard.
Okay. So we continue to attend the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League. We've attended in January, February, and March. We had an open-house public meeting for the Clubhouse Road Drainage Project on February 13th. We developed a brochure for that project, which I will show you on the next slide, and we also updated the questions and answers that we have on our webpage for this project. Now, our webpage address for these projects, they're actually lumped together on the webpage, but it's under the address at the bottom there, vbgov/windsorwoods. We also have an email address that we monitor to address for any questions or comments or any additional information that the, the public has, and we, we put this out to the civic leagues when we visit them. And we received the final draft preliminary engineering report for Windsor Woods on February 22nd. This is the brochure I was just mentioning that was passed out at the public hearing, and these are the question-and-answer pages that are currently on our webpage. And we continue to add question and answers to this document. This is the Clubhouse Road Drainage Improvements Project. This is one of our projects that we submitted for a FEMA grant. If you recall, we submitted this project for a FEMA grant, and we, the first step was to get through VDEM, and we were notified in January that this project and one of our other projects that I'm going to talk about in a second were forwarded by VDEM to FEMA for further consideration. So we hope to find out in May whether either one of these projects received the grant funding. So with that being said, the schedule for this project has been slowed down because we don't want to spend the funding before we get the grant, or we won't be able to get reimbursed for it. So we have on here just a construct, construction start date of no later than February 2020, because even if we get notified in May that we receive the grant funding, it could be October before we actually get the, the document, the agreement between FEMA and us to proceed with the project.
But if we don't get the grant, we're going to go ahead and continue with the funding that we had already allotted?
Absolutely, and, and we are finalizing design. We're moving ahead on the project, and we did ask for the, the 3.3 million dollars for this project. There is a 25% match that we already have on the project, but it's a 25%... There is a 25% match that we already have on the project, but it's a 2575. These are the pipe projects that we continue to call the FEMA reimbursement projects. This was the, the projects that received the 5.3 million dollars in FEMA reimbursement last year. The, the schedules have been updated to reflect the funding that is currently allocated in the FY19 CIP. The engineering design is in progress. The survey work has been completed. We are coordinating with Public Utilities because there will be some utility betterments with this project. Uh, and that's why. And this is the Windsor Woods Tide Gate. This is the other project that we submitted for FEMA grant funding. It's estimated to cost $6.7 million. Public Works is working closely with Parks and Rec to coordinate the location of the, the site. We want to make sure that we don't adversely impact Mount, impact Mount Trashmore's park amenities. Engineering design on the tide gate and the interim pumping is ongoing and the project, as I said, is estimated to cost $6.7 million. This is a rendition of the tide gate that is proposed at Thayer Creek. It's an, uh, an interim pump station will be installed next to this tide gate. We had a meeting with the, the agencies on January 17th. They had some questions concerning our application. We met with them in person to discuss their concerns so that they could continue on with their application, which has already been submitted.
What's the cost?
Whoops.
Six point seven.
Yes, this is 6.7 million.
Six point seven.
This is a, an example of what the interim pumping facilities may look like. So once the tide gate is constructed and while the permanent pump station is being constructed, we need to have interim pumping facilities to be able to pump down Lake Windsor. So this is what they could be, look like.
Uh, on these projects, when we're having the pump, these bigger pumping stations, obviously they've become critical infrastructure compared to some other things, is that going to be its own category of, of maintenance? And are we going to maintain them to a higher level of material condition than less critical stuff? And will that be highlighted in the CIP? Because I know we, when we have critical stuff, you know, material condition index of 90 versus 75 versus, you know, what I'm talking about. And I, and I'm just looking for as we do this, the lessons learned is, you know, don't do the maintenance. You have trouble and they've learned that down south in Louisiana and other places. Sounds great until it doesn't work. And so I'm just making sure that we are segregating these, these critical infrastructure pieces and we are maintaining them to a higher level of material condition readiness.
Yes.
Yes, uh, as, as our pump station inventory grows and then become more sophisticated, we're going to have to build our maintenance staff up to really address the daily maintenance needs of these pump stations.
I'm just asking, but in the CIP or whatever, is, is that, is there going to be a place where that is visible so that people know it's being done?
There, there already is. There, in the, the operations and maintenance portion of the CIP, there's a pump station, maintenance CIP.
All right. I'll look for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so this is a, a map showing the dredging projects. Four of the five projects are completed or substantially completed. So Windsor Woods Canal is one of the ones that is substantially complete. Notice to proceed was given in June of 2017. The dredging is complete. New topsoil has been distributed and is currently being graded. Plants are being installed and the final project closeout will occur in the next couple of months. The same with the North Gate Ditch. It's substantially complete. The dredging is complete. The soil lifts have been installed at the critical bank locations. The stop, the topsoil is being distributed and graded and the plants are being installed. Final proj, project closeout will occur in the next couple of months.
I have a question on that one. We have a citizen who's really concerned about all the leaves that are going into that ditch and constantly clogging it up. And, you know, we've got that park there that's, uh, just full of trees and, you know, he would rather us keep a, an orange fence up along the way to keep those leaves out. What are we doing going forward to make sure that the leaves are not constantly blocking up that canal after we've dredged it?
Couple of years.
Yeah, we.
What's, what's the schedule to keep that clean?
Well, we, we already have this ditch on our maintenance schedule higher up and, you know, and Nicole works in this area to look at the ditches. We talked with Parks and Recreation on how to manage the leaves in the park and how to manage their trees. Uh, I'll tell you, they have a little bit different view than we do on leaf matter.
About trees, yes.
And, and everything. But we're probably going to talk to them again about some sort of fencing along the top of the bank just to keep the leaves from.
Well, I mean, I've been out there, I don't know, no short of six, seven times and that park is.
Yes.
One of the unmanned.
Yes.
You've, you've been there with me.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, just curious.
We're going to work it.
Because it's going to continue to, to be an issue and a phone call, so we may as well get ahead of it and figure out.
Yes.
So that we don't have to have those conversations.
We're going to work the leaves.
Thank you, Mark.
The last dredging project that is actually, has not started construction yet. We are still waiting on three easements on this project, project. So construction is delayed until the easements are fully executed and recorded. I don't have a timeline on that. We do know that construction will take 10 months after we received notice to proceed. And that's the update for this month.
Any questions, discussion? Ms. Henley?
He's going to have a voice planning when we turn around and have a drive.
Jocularity, that's what we.
We'll have surge capacity.
We'll have surge capacity. In the old Virginia Beach tomorrow, in, in the old Virginia Beach tomorrow plans, not one word of drainage or flooding. You know, we've, we've done all this because of Matthew.
Also the forecast of heavier rains coming forward.
Well, anyway.
It's not just forecast, we're getting heavier rains.
We also had droughts.
Okay.
And that could happen any day.
Okay.
Let Louis trap the water in from his leg gas and then that happens.
So.
We're going to have people complaining because their legs are dry.
I was thinking.
Is this now the police?
No, we are, no.
Best we can.
No, we are going to give you the planning items and then we're going to do Washington Square. So, planning items for the month of April.
Bill?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be taking you through the planning items to be considered by the council at your April 2nd and April 16th meetings. For April 2nd, we have just one item for your consideration. This item is a request for conditional rezoning from R10 residential and I-1 light industrial to conditional I-1 light industrial. The application was deferred at the March 19th City Council meeting in order to meet legal requirements for revised proffer agreement. The proffer agreement was revised to further restrict uses on the property, including self-storage, automobile service stations, and automobile repair garages. Moving on to April 16th, we have seven items for your consideration. All have been recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission. Item one is a request for a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard proposed adjacent to the Norfolk International Airport. The existing six-acre site is zoned I-1 light industrial and is located within the airport industrial park. The applicant is requesting to develop the property with a bulk storage yard for the storage of containers, boats, RVs, and tractor trailers. The lot will be improved with engineered gravel paving. An existing 20-foot wide utility easement along the northern property line will serve as a buffer to the adjacent office warehouse building. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request.
I like their name. At least we've got our name in the airport for one.
Yeah, how about that? Next item.
Are we cost participating in their BNP or is that all their expense?
That's at their expense.
Outstanding.
Yeah. Next item is a modification of conditions to an existing childcare education center within a religious use. In January of 2000, the Emmanuel Protestant Episcopal Church received a conditional use permit for a preschool. A condition of approval limited the hours of the school from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. In 2018, the church completed construction on a new activity room and now wishes to expand the hours of operation for the preschool from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There will be no increase in the current maximum enrollment of 20 children. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. The third item is a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor in a unit within an existing shopping center located at the northeast corner of South Plaza Trail and Daytona Drive. The 2,000-square-foot tattoo parlor will employ up to eight people. The typical hours of operation will be from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. With the exception of new signage, no other changes are proposed to the exterior of the building. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Next item is a modification of conditions for a 306-site campground approved by the City Council in 1971. A floodplain variance and modifications to the conditional use permit were approved in 2005 and again in 2015 when the campground was purchased by the current owner to accommodate minor expansion of amenities and maintenance to buildings. The owner is now seeking to construct two community piers, one at each end of the recreational beach. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this particular request. Fifth item is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales. The site is developed with a one-story building constructed in 1979 that was previously a convenience store and is now vacant. The applicant wishes to display up to 28 cars in the existing parking lot adjacent to Newtown Road. No auto repair is proposed on-site and there is a condition prohibiting this activity. Plant material will be installed along Newtown Road adjacent to the display area. Details regarding the type and location of this landscaping will be finalized during site plan review. Along the southern property line, the applicant is seeking a deviation from the required landscaping. Instead, they would like to install a six-foot-tall fence, which we've deemed appropriate because of the existence of a 20-foot-wide drainage and utility easement along that side of the property, which prevents installation of plant material.
Is that in the bend of the road?
In terms of the fence, sir?
No, the, the location itself.
The bend in the road. Oh, you mean the, the actual easement itself?
No, the, the fill box. Is it right there at the bend of the road?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's in that southeast corner of the bend. Yeah.
What's, what's behind it?
There are, uh.
Is there any business?
It's businesses. There are residential's buildings to the south. Yes, sir.
When you look at the number of cars, and you can obviously get a standard sky and square footage, but when you look at the area that's the display, that's not a rectangle. So has anyone actually looked at, you know, the parameters of that and said, really, can you get 28 cars in that spot in the, in the, in what they call their display area?
Right, right. Have we done that analysis? No.
Well, I think someone needs to think before someone says 28 cars. So see what's going to happen?
Right.
I can take this and won't name them here.
Sure.
Off the camera, I'll tell you some places. Well, however we look, if you ever try to go there and get your place serviced, there's, hopefully there's never a car fire because your, your car will burn.
Correct.
But I'm just making sure that that actually fits the geometry of their display area. We got to know that.
We, we will, we will investigate that and put that into a supplement for you.
Right, thank you.
Good, Jess?
To the, kind of getting to what John's saying, the, my other concern is that if that space is not big enough, that they'll start parking clients in the neighborhood.
Right.
And I.
That's a legitimate concern.
Those can, issues other places.
Right, right.
This is polite information. This is an industrial.
No, no, I'm familiar with the area, yeah. And I'm, I mean, they're going to, if they, if there's not enough places for them to park.
Sure.
They're going to find a place for everybody else to park and it's not going to be on-site, so.
Right, no, that's a valid point. Okay.
Thank you.
No changes to the building are proposed, other than a single non-illuminated building-mounted sign above the entryway. A monument-style sign is proposed at the intersection. A condition is recommended limiting this sign to no more than six feet in height. The city of Norfolk submitted a letter with concerns regarding the nature of this use and its proximity to the tide light rail station at Newtown Road. The city believes auto sales is not compatible nor an optimal use in this particular area. The sixth item is a conditional use permits for craft brewery and open-air market. The brewery is proposed within the existing building on the property built by the U.S. Postal Service in 1964. The 6,700-square-foot building will be renovated to include an area for manufacturing and storage of beer, three tasting rooms, and a 260-square-foot outdoor patio area. No live music, amplification of music, use of speakers, or monitors are proposed outdoors. No food will be prepared on-site. Instead, the applicant will provide space for a food truck. Typical hours for the food truck will be from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. The food truck will utilize an electrical outlet in order to minimize any noise that might otherwise be created by generators. Staff is in receipt of three letters from citizens. While they are not opposed, these citizens were concerned about limited parking on-site and the possibility of amplified music outside. One citizen was also concerned about special events drawing large numbers of people as well as the existing congestion on Pleasure House Road. It should be noted, though, that the applicant dropped a request for conditional use permit for assembly use, which would have allowed these special events. And this in turn reduced the parking requirement such that the parking is now met on-site. And as previously noted, we have a condition that no live music, amplification of music, or use of speakers will be allowed outside.
When you use the word no monitor, does that include television? Just what does monitor mean?
Good question. It was, it's a condition found in the staff report, and it was in the applicant's statement of operations. We can get clarification. I mean monitor as communication between staff and, and management, but it could also mean a, a television as well.
I just think it's if we all, just the one's ambiguity is always everywhere.
Right, right.
I just think you need to clarify what that term means.
Sure.
If anyone's upset later when they find that being something.
The applicant is, is very sensitive to outdoor noise and was quite willing to essentially eliminate any cause for outdoor noise or sound. And further, he is proposing a fence. It's called a noise-stop fence along the rear side of the property, which is an acoustical fence, which will help to mitigate further any sound or noise from the rear area. Essentially, it's, it's basically a wooden fence that, that has insulating materials sandwiched between it.
Hey, Ms. Henley?
Is the open-air market component of this food truck?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So when we see open-air markets, I think of vendors selling things.
Sure.
But a food truck is an open-air market.
It's limited to just one food truck in this case. Yes, ma'am. The last item is a conditional rezoning from the B2 Community Business District to conditional B4 mixed-use. This rezoning will allow the development of the property with two hotels and a restaurant. Development will be phased with the first phase consisting of the hotel and restaurant fronting on Community College Place. Vehicle access will be via Community College Place. Access is not allowed onto Princess Anne Road because of its classification as limited-access highway. City Council voted to declare this property as excess in March 19th. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. We have staff here from the Economic Development Office to answer particulars about this application.
So my question, if you go back to the previous slide.
Yes, ma'am.
The area in the rectangle, in the rectangle space that you have there in the red, the, the previous slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So I see Buckner Boulevard that's listed there. And one of the things that came up during the informational session about the project was about flooding in that area. And I remember we kind of addressed, from my recollection, it was something to the effect that that's not going to be an area that's going to be impacted. But since I do see it here, I would like to know what is the current flooding situation there and if this project is going to affect that Buckner Boulevard. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more item?
Yes, sir. At.
At Mr. Moss's request, we are going to provide you an update on zoning assessment of...
Thank you.
Thank you, T. That's Mr. Seaman's, I could... This is the one I brought forward about three weeks ago, I believe, because there was an application before the BZA for a variance to create duplexes. And so people went back and went to a lot of the historic, back to 1972, land-use things, and it's drew into question whether or not the application before the BZA was legit... could be legitimately submitted. And this is the purpose of this, is to bring us to square one, what the status is.
So our new planning director, Bobby Tahan, is going to brief us, and you have a PowerPoint that is new, and we apologize for not getting that out on Friday, but we just put it together the weekend and Monday and Tuesday. So Bobby?
I'm gonna very briefly go over the Board of Zoning Appeals, just kind of explain, just real brief about zoning. Our zoning administrator, who would be awkward to introduce himself and explain himself and what he does and his role, and then just give a brief overview of the Washington Square and Regency development as it stands and the proposals that were in front of us. So zoning administrator, as you guys, as the council knows, Kevin Kemp is our zoning administrator. He's the city staff responsible for interpreting and administering the zoning regulations of the city. As per the Code of Virginia, he has all necessary authority on behalf of the governing body to administer and enforce the zoning regulations. So it's his job to make sure that development is doing its best job to meet all the requirements that you've approved in the zoning. Okay? Any interpretation or determination or any violation that he or his staff writes, they can be appealed, but they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's per state law. The Board of Zoning Appeals is called out in state law that states that they are to hear any appeals of any decision or order or any violation from the zoning administrator, as well as hear any variances or any relief or deviations from the zoning regulations. So that's why many times you don't see in front of you, when someone requires a setback variance because their house is already built and they want to add a porch onto their home, it doesn't come in front of you, it comes to the Board of Zoning Appeals for relief for that. Good thing, important thing to note is that the Board of Zoning Appeals is quasi-judicial. So what that means is that they end up reviewing it in a court-like manner, and anything that they hear gets... If someone appeals the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, it goes to the Circuit Court. Okay? This is just real quick, the process for the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's a submittal timeframe similar to our other processes to give staff time to review and to assure that applications that come forward are complete, and which is what the process is as we were reviewing, as Councilman Moss brought up, the Regency request. And we took almost every bit of that time to research to make sure that the application is actually complete. Just a real quick overview of the area, and then I'll hand it over to Kevin to go over his analysis, and that he and PJ Scully and our staff was able to do. You have Washington Square and Regency bounded by Great Neck, Wolf Snare, and Regency Drive. It's a multi-phase development that has townhouses and multifamily. What came forward to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, which also hears variances to the Chesapeake Bay requirements, were four proposals. It was to develop essentially these four numbered lots that are under ownership by the original owner of the property, or the current holder of the property. All four projects are within the 75, greater-than-75 noise zone, and they were seeking relief from the, not only the setbacks, but also location as far as being within the 50-foot and the 100-foot CBPA buffers. From here, we'll go into a little bit of detail. That's why this is very long. We do apologize for the length of it, but there is a long history that goes back to the '60s that we wanted to make sure we were able to address. So I'll hand it over to Kevin at this point.
Thank you, Bobby. And I'll put these files here as a visual as to, you know, as Councilman Moss said, this dates back to 1968, and some portions of the property even before then. So these are the files we've been dealing with. As you may be aware, council operated differently in the '60s. The conditional use permits weren't as detailed. Conditions were different. There were less graphics, meets and bounds, so, you know, it's been a challenge for staff the past three weeks putting this together, but we feel like we have a pretty good understanding of the chronology of this, which is where I'm gonna start. I'm gonna go through the approvals, and then I'll circle back to the four development proposals in there right now, and how those approvals relate to the validity of the developments. So in 1968, this whole parcel was rezoned from R3, R4, which is the equivalent to R10 now, to residential multifamily. This yellow line here is the meets and bounds to what was included in that original 1968 All this, now multifamily, this had already been developed or was in the process of being developed at that time. So in 1968, this was all rezoned. The other important things to know are that 164 units, townhome units, were approved in the Washington Square area, which is seen there in red. And then this will become important later in the presentation, a strip of R10 zoning remained where the old Wolf Snare Road is. And the desire there was, it was a condition that said, hey, we're gonna keep the width of a standard residential lot so we can keep single-family development along Wolf Snare, you know, maintain the character of the area before we get into the denser multifamily. Then in 1971, a use permit was filed for this little square here. It was for five townhouses. There was a, that weird triangular portion of the lot was shown as a vacant parcel on the approval. But the significance of this is that the current Washington Square neighborhood, as of 1971, there were 169 units approved, and there are 169 units built. So with that 1968, 1971 approval, they have maxed out the units for that area. Then we get to the rest, and this is where it really gets convoluted. 1972 approval, they had a conditional use permit for townhouses and apartments. Right now, that would be a by-right use. Back in the '60s, you had to rezon the property and then get a conditional use permit. It was standard practice that they cap density or the number of units. In this case, council did something that we don't see very often, and approved a units-per-acre. So they approved nine units-per-acre for townhouses and 12 for apartments. This varies from what Planning Commission had recommended. They had specific numbers. Council reversed that, said, you know, we're just gonna use density and approve it on this land, and they required six acres of recreational space. What was built was 463 townhomes. It changed significantly from the original council approval. Originally, it was townhomes to here, apartments sprinkled in. They increased the townhome development, reduced the apartments, but currently there are 463 townhomes, and the recreational space was built. It was 3.56 acres. I know this question came up with one of the citizens in an original foyer that said, well, hey, they agreed to a six-acre, you know, recreational space. They shorted us because it's only three and a half acres. So history, we track down on that. 1972, city sends a letter to the developer. As developer had reached out, said, hey, we want the city to buy this park. City reached out to them, said, no, we're not interested in buying it. 1973, developer agreed, said, okay, well, we'll develop this park, and we will maintain it. It'll be for the use of all our residents. And then this is the key. In 1974, the planning department sent a letter to the developer that okayed the 3.56 acres of recreational space if additional open space and recreational space was dispersed throughout the community. As a result, when this section of townhomes was developed in the '80s, these parcels in the rear here, right at Wolf Snare Creek, they were replatted as open, not developable space, were included in the open space, therefore meeting the six-acre requirement. So although the middle parcel is only three and a half acres, the open space does meet the requirement of those initial conditional use permits. So that's question one answered. Now I'll just get into, as Bobby mentioned, there's four current development proposals at different phases in this development, and that is what has raised this inquiry. So I just wanted to briefly go through each one. The first one is right down here. It's two parcels, and they have proposed a semi-detached dwelling. This actually went and was approved by the CBPA Board September 24, 2018. Unbeknownst to the board, we have now found out that there is a 50-foot buffer required from the marsh edge of slope inward that was included in the 1972 use permit. So now the question is, where exactly is that buffer? Does this proposal encroach into that? Point being, if one of those homes could not be built because of an encroachment into that buffer, single-family isn't permitted, then we have an issue with the type of development proposed. The next two items were the one Councilman Moss were referring to for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just to give you an update, they are being indefinitely deferred from the April agenda next week. First one is this little wedge here. This was that triangular piece that was included in the 1971 use permit. As I said before, in that use permit, 169 units were the total for that area. They have built 169 units. Therefore, it is maxed out, and this parcel may require a modification to the use permit for additional units should it want to be developed. Same goes for this parcel, except this wasn't included in the 1971, but the 1968 rezoning. So the same thing applies. The issues that we will get into as we look deeper into this is also that this site is in a greater noise zone where density cannot be increased. The last parcel, which is most visible, and I will say most controversial in this regard, is right at the entrance, and it's a uniquely-zoned parcel. Half is A18 and part is R10. I said earlier about that buffer along Old Wolf Snare Road. That is why you have this odd zoning of R10 and A18 here, but that is also, you know, evident to staff that, hey, this was included in that 68 rezoning. If it weren't that weird strip and weird zoning that was officially recorded, wouldn't be there. So this has, just last week or this week, it was indefinitely deferred from the CBPA. Here is the proposal that was submitted to the CBPA. In the A18 area, they would like 12 townhomes, and in the R10, five single families. We have not made any conclusions, but if it is included in the 1968 conditional use permit, like staff believes it is, then there's a possibility that this is not a by-right development, but it would need a modification for council. The R10 along Wolf Snare Road, that was included in the 1968 proposal and is developable by right. So where we stand, staff met with the developer and their development team this morning. We went over these findings, exactly as I am with you now. Not only, you know, this is the limit to the city records we have. They are going to go through their records. They asked for a couple weeks to go through, and then we're gonna coincide, meet, and come to an understanding. So that's where we are moving forward. The BZA and CBPA items are indefinitely deferred, and that the first development project I went through is in site plan review and being held. Are there any questions? That was a real quick overview. First of all, I wanna, because I have been going through these records myself at my house. My wife sometimes kills me. I got the whole dining room table and the carpet covered with paper. But I do appreciate all that you've done here, because this was a very complicated issue. And also, I want to recognize the residents of Washington Square who did their own forensic work to start with to realize that something just wasn't right, and I know all these old records. But as the pressure for infilling happens, you know, we're gonna have to be really watchful to go back and look at some of these historical records to make sure that someone's watching and can solve paper. But I do appreciate all the hard work, and I know the people of Washington Square certainly appreciate all the hard work, and we're looking out both for the property owners, but also the existing residents, that everybody's being treated fairly, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Very well stated, Mr. Moss. Hey, anything else? Rosemary?
Just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that the school board had asked me to be part of the discussions for Achievable Dream, and they're working on a plan to move to the next level for high school. So they've got everything for middle school, but they've got to work to how they put in the high school grades. And so they're gonna be working on a proposal that's gonna be coming forth in the next couple of months.
Okay, that sounds nice. Great. John?
When are we going to get the brief, or hopefully the briefing materials for the compression pay memo that we got, which was nice but left you unfulfilled, and the actual detailed pay parity report? Because we just got a summary of that, too, and I'm getting, I'm sure many of you, too, are getting lots of questions, and all I have is something very summary-level. So when is that happening?
I will place it on your agenda. We'll pin it down, and it'll be in your Friday packet on the three-month. But I intend to bring both those briefings during the month of April so that you have full disclosure. I got your request for the data related to the compression. I've reviewed some numbers today with the staff. They're back trying to figure out a couple of numbers that didn't look right, and we will present those to you, and with your permission, I'll share with all the councils so that they all get a chance to look at those numbers. And we're also on the pay parity between sheriff and police. The consultant was asked to do some more work, and that was at a joint meeting with both the sheriff and the police department, with the HR team and the public safety DCM. And we expect those results to be wrapped up this week, and there's probably some disparity there. And so as your resolutions say, I gotta figure out a four-year adaptation strategy to get there, and we're gonna have to work up the monies there. But as I see it, we might be able to absorb that. I still got some numbers to work out, John.
I was just asking for status.
Working on it hard.
No, and, you know, I just think it's important to realize that the direction that we have to go, I mean, we've been talking about this for a number of years, decades plus, okay? And, you know, we have a lot on our plate going, but I think we identified stormwater, but we also identified public safety as a high priority.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I think going forward, you know, the time to start is now. It may take a couple of years to achieve it, but I think the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step, and that'll be this year.
I can tell the council, I remain convinced that the working group's proposal is an adequate solution and will prevent some of the inadequacies that have been created by these one-time insertions of adjustment. And the data is starting to show us that we've done some harm to the balance associated with fair time and service to the pay that's currently being paid, and we'll demonstrate that for you with the data.
Things will be rectified, okay?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? We are adjourned.